This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday, July 18th. Please stand prior to invocation led by Dr. Dan Taylor, Public Safety Chaplain, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Lord, we thank you for your presence here today. And we ask you, Lord, to be involved in every aspect of this meeting. Thank you for that. God, we pray for this great city. We pray for these leaders, their staff. And God, we especially pray for first responders who protect us and care for us. God, I want to pray Numbers, Chapter 6, verses 24 through 26, over this city and over this meeting. I pray that the Lord will bless you and keep you. I pray that the Lord will smile on you and be gracious to you. I pray that the Lord will show favor to you and give you peace. And we ask it all in your name. Amen.
Roll call, President Small.
Here.
Vice President Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Penn.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Davis. Statement of Rules.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
It's good to see everybody this morning. Welcome to our meeting. At this meeting, we do have rules. At this time, I ask if anyone have any type of electronic device, including cell phones, please at this time put on the off or the vibrating position, the off or the vibrating position. Any person that is desiring to address the council must sign in indicating the resolution to ordinance of appeal of public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must state his or her name and address. Any person desiring to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must contact the City Clerk office the Thursday prior to that particular meeting. The subject that he or she wishes to express to the council must be identified and retained to the City of Mobile Business. Any person who has not given proper notice to the City Clerk office and wishes to address the council would not be allowed to do so. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the council. A bell was signed to indicate the end of two minutes. One minute remains, some are rising. Second bell indicate that the time has expired. When addressing the council, there has to be no personal address to any individual council member. All statements are to be made to the chair who will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain decorum, there will be no undue applause and a public outcry allowed. Now, the City Clerk.
Approval of minutes of July 11.
So moved.
Take.
They're properly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hence approved.
Communications from Mayor Simpson.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good to see everyone here this morning. We have a lot of very important youth with us today who will be recognized shortly. And after they've been recognized and we've completed my remarks, we will exit and have pictures made. But anyway, before I introduce them, I'd like to say that each one of you are very important, and we appreciate you being here. Some of you will leave here as, matter of fact, all of you will leave here as ambassadors, some of you for youth prevention and others to represent our city in Japan. So my other remarks have to do with the Broad Street revitalization. Depending on who you talk to, this project was in the making probably over the last 30 years. And it's not just an ordinary project. It took a lot of state and federal and local money to make it happen in a lot of time. But anybody that's ridden down Broad Street recently realized that it is transformative in what it's done, and we're not complete through with it yet. But because of that, an ordinary ribbon cutting ceremony is probably not proper. We can do better than that. So we're going to invite everyone to lope the loop, and that is all around the Henry Aaron Loop, which would be Water Street, all the way to Borogard, Broad Street, Canal Street, and so forth. That will be Saturday, July 29th. It has a 7:00 AM check-in, try to get ahead of the hot weather. And this check-in is at the Ice Box. It will feature the ribbon cutting, but also a three and a half mile run around the Henry Aaron Loop and celebration for Fala at the Ice Box. And its event is open to all, and I'd say that's walkers, runners, cyclists, parents, pets, children. And the route is also wheelchair accessible. Again, the check-in is at 7:00 AM at the Ice Box, which is on Monroe Street, but it's right, also Butts Canal Street on the south side of the course. The run itself will actually then begin at 7:30. You can pre-register for the event now, online. It's free, but for $10, you can get a T-shirt. You also can find out more information and registration link at thecitymobile.org and on our various social media channels. I'd also like to point out today, the culmination of a year's long effort to grow Mobile's population through annexation. We will extend to those areas that vote to come into the city. We will extend full public services to those areas, to those West Mobile residents. We believe that it secures a brighter future for the entire region, not just for the city, but also those in West Mobile. A lot of people need to be thanked for all this effort, but I'd first say thank you to the City Council. Thank you to the staff that's been engaged in it, and also for the dedicated group of supporters in West Mobile that asked us in 2019 to continue with this effort, to allow them to come into the city. A little-known fact is, starting in 1814, Mobile has always grown westward. There've been 21 annexation attempts, oh, not attempts, there've been 21 annexations over that period of time. What happens is, is that people want new houses. Typically, the land is cheaper outside of the city limits. New houses are built, and people move to those new houses. Then commerce, the grocery stores, the strip malls show up. Anyway, so this is our effort to continue growing the city, and we're following what those have been doing before us since 1814. I have a proclamation that I'd like to read this time, and I'm looking at my friend Joshua Jones up there, and I know that you have a lot of students with you. And depending on how, and I know some of them are going to speak in a moment, Josh, but I will read this, but if you want them to either stay seated or line up the stairs, that's your call, okay? But I'm going to, so what would you like for them to do? Y'all can stand up then. Anybody under 24 years, stand up, okay? If you're under 24, stand up. Thank you, Josh. Okay. Okay. All right, here we go. Well, 24 plus a couple, all right? About you, Josh. Okay. And the proclamation reads, "Whereas the City Mobile is committed to the safety, well-being, and prosperous future of its youth, who are our most valuable asset and the promise of our community, and whereas Youth Violence Prevention Week, YVP, provides an important opportunity for our community to come together, raise awareness, and take decisive action to end youth violence. And whereas, the City Mobile recognizes the power of education, engagement, and collaboration in addressing the root causes of violence and promoting peaceful, nurturing environments for our youth. And whereas, we acknowledge the indispensable role of families, schools, community organizations, faith-based institutions, law enforcement agencies, and government entities in fostering safe and inclusive spaces that empower our young people to thrive. And whereas, by amplifying the voices of our youth, promoting mentoring programs, enhancing conflict resolution skills, and promoting positive, nonviolent alternatives, we can inspire a generation of peacemakers and transform our community for the better. And whereas, through collective efforts, we can build a brighter future, free from the devastating impact of youth violence, ensuring that all young people in the City of Mobile have the opportunity to grow, learn, and achieve their dreams. Now therefore, I, William S. Simpson, the 108th Mayor of the City of Mobile, hereby proclaim, July 17th through 23rd, 2023, is Youth Violence Prevention Week in the City of Mobile." Congratulations to all of you.
Thank you to Mr. Mayor, Chief of Staff, Council members. I, um, when we started this over 500 days ago, the initial goal was to change the societal norms in the community, change the way that we approach dealing with violence prevention in general, but specifically youth violence. And one of the things that we wanted to do was give the kids or make the youth engaged and credible voices in the community and the efforts surrounding violence prevention in general. And I hope today is a visual representation of those efforts that y'all see coming forth, and that this is the first of many opportunities for them to voice their opinions and their beliefs on these efforts in front of all about us as city leaders. So I present Ms. Mariah Smith, Zane Morgan, and Mr. Sanjay Moore.
Good morning, everyone. I am Mariah Smith, the newly crowned 2023 Juneteenth Miss America. One of my leading platforms consists of instilling confidence within today's youth and encouraging them to get into the arts, specifically music. I have spent timeless hours practicing multiple instruments, oboe, clarinet, and soprano saxophone. Good things take time, and when time is spent positively, there is a positive reaction. As you know, youth violence is highly evident in our community. However, if there were additional programs in our community, it would replace idle time with the development of confidence, inspiration, and motivation. Art programs accessible to the youth would help positively impact lives by providing a learning opportunity through a different lens. For instance, I am in the jazz studio, a local youth jazz group in Mobile, and it is incredible to see how differently everyone expresses themselves through jazz. Some come in shy to improvisation, including myself, but the possibilities are endless once we learn to mix up rhythms and dynamics, which are volume changes. This way of expressing oneself comes with benefits and opportunities, not consequences. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Zane Morgan. I attend Murphy High School, and I'm an uprising junior. Community, what exactly does the word mean and who does it include? A community is a group of people who live in the same place or have particular characteristics in common. Most of us who are here today have something in common. We are the youth of the City of Mobile. Even though it's glorious to see all of these youth here, unfortunately, we're not gathered for a happy cause. In the past four months, I've witnessed many souls lost to gun violence alone, and not a single one of them were over the age of 25. Gun violence continue to elevate that organization like Youth Violence Prevention has to be established. YVP wants to change, but in order to change, we need the support of our councilmen and the City of Mobile. Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Sanjay Moore. I'm an upcoming senior at Davidson High School. It's important to me to be involved and engaged with the city leaders in regards to the youth violence prevention, because I understand the significance of addressing the issue and at its core. By collaborating with city leaders, we can develop effective strategies to provide support and resources for at-risk youth, ultimately working towards creating safer communities for everybody.
Yeah, I would like to say congratulations to the youth and also to you, Ms. Smith and Mr. Morgan and Mr. Moore. You all are great role models, and you follow a great role model, Mr. Josh Jones up there also. But the thing about it is that this council here is more than willing and able to work with the administration and make sure that we can keep vibrant programs in our community, because we know that our out of mind, you know, is a devil workshop, and with not having programs in the City of Mobile, keep our youth mind, you know, kind of out a little bit. So therefore, and I know that I can speak on behalf of my office, and I believe that the other five council members up here also, that we strongly support the youth programs. And again, that's why we have partnered with the administration to have different programs in the past and everything. So anything that you all can think of, especially to make sure that we can stop the gun violence and bring more, save more souls, as the young man has stated earlier, please let us know. And even as it's working through Mr. Josh Jones, he have direct contact with us, and again, we are more than and willing and able to do anything for our youth, for the City of Mobile. Again, thank you all and congratulations.
Mr. President.
Mr. Carroll.
I'd like to follow up behind you and concur with everything that you've just said, but when you have youth that are trying to improve our city and our community, and at the age they are, it's hard to do it without the support of their parents. And this parent group with these kids must be extremely strong. I see some of them in here today. Easy, you must be really proud of your daughter, Ms. Smith. And Ms. Lang, you must be really proud of your son down here. Let me congratulate the parents also for their involvement in trying to help us prevent gun violence in this city.
Mr. President.
Vice President Gregory.
I agree with everything my colleagues have said so far. Thank you, Josh, for working so hard to put this entire group together and working with other colleagues of yours in the police department and the administration. I too am in full support of everything that you are doing. I look forward to seeing you all on Friday at Hillsdale for our program there. But thank you, youngsters, for being here with us today, for representing your communities, and for getting involved. You know, we really appreciate what you are doing, the parents, of course. So just keep up the good work and just know that you have our support.
At this, at this time, I'd like to thank y'all very much, Josh. Y'all can have a seat, and we'll exit in just a few moments. This time, I'd like to introduce a group of students and their chaperones who are actually going to Ichihara, Japan. This is the 30th anniversary of us having students take this trip. We have, Ichihara is our sister city. And so joining the chaperones and the students will also be our very own CJ Small. So if you'd come back speaking Japanese, Councilman Small. So if y'all could all stand and let's give a
Also, Councilman Bean Reynolds.
Oh, Councilman Reynolds, okay. Both of you. You're in good hands. Y'all please stand and let's give it a round of applause. Thank y'all very much. So at this time, I'd like to call on, y'all can sit down. This time, I'd like to call on Chief to introduce our Officer of the Month.
Mayor, Chief of Staff, Council, thank you for having us here today. I'd like to introduce you to Officer Taylor Wood. To be honest, I could be up here every month talking about Taylor. He has, he's been with us since 2016. He's currently assigned to Intelligence, and he's on the U.S. Marshal's Fugitive Task Force. Telling the mayor earlier, when we have our weekly crime meeting, anybody that remotely needs to be found, we constantly say, have you kicked this over to Taylor Wood? Because if you kick it over to Taylor, he's going to find, it may take him some time, but he's going to find you. In this past month, he, his accomplishments are too many to go into today, but the fugitives that he found in this past month included people that were wanted for nearly two years, some of them over two years for things such as shooting into occupied vehicles, assault first. He also was instrumental in getting one of our fugitives that was wanted for capital murder out of the City of Mobile, put on the Marshal's Top 15 United States Wanted List. Speaking of Mark Slope, who is the U.S. Marshal, that's not an easy task to do. It takes a lot to get somebody elevated to that point, and he did. And someone, and this subject that had been wanted for over two years was apprehended in Avon, Indiana, due to Taylor Wood's efforts. He's constantly going above and beyond. He was up until 4:00 this morning tracking a suspect, and when he leaves here, he was just sitting here telling me he's got leads, and he thinks he'll have him in custody by the end of the day. That's the kind of officer that he is, and I'd like to send him as our Officer of the Month in June of 2023.
For our youth, Taylor, if you could just hang just for a second. Our youth, we all tend to judge a book by its cover. We look at someone and we categorize them. I'd be willing to bet you 10 to 1 that none of you would look at Taylor Woods and think he's in law enforcement. I mean, his bearing, his presence, his dress, his everything is distinguished, but let me tell you this, every day, he's out there trying to find bad guys to help protect you. You could possibly have a future in law enforcement. We need smart, energetic, hard-working youth to decide this is their pathway, because one day, it will be up to you to help protect other youth. So thank you very much for your service, Taylor. Thank you very much. So at this time, we can, those who are going to have the picture made outside, we'll walk out there and do that.
I hope y'all have a great trip. I know with you, Co., and the crew going with you all, it will be fabulous. So safe travels, everybody.
All right, Mr. President. As everybody is clearing out, I'd like to make a very special announcement here. We've got some special guests. We've got Mr. J.C. Smith, who's the Cub Master for Cub Scout PAC 29 from Corpus Christi Church. We have two of our Cub Scouts, Jack Smith and James Dotson, today, and they are working toward the highest rank in Cub Scouts, Arrow of Light. These young men both attend Corpus Christi Catholic School and will be going into the fifth grade. Jack plays football, baseball, basketball, and swimming, third place overall in the city. Jack is also a high-performing student in the classroom, on the principal's list honor roll, and has received the Optimist Club Award. James plays basketball, various other sports, loves swimming, and spending time with friends. Thank y'all for coming here today. We've got a couple of bags down here, but I'd really, I think it would be special if y'all came down here in front of the dais and took a picture with the city council. What do you think? If y'all go that way and come around?
Madam Clerk.
Adoption of the agenda.
So moved. Take.
They're properly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda's adopted.
Appeals. We have requests for a wave the noise ordinance on July 22nd on Donald Street, September 23rd in Tricentennial Park, August 26th in Cathedral Square, September 2nd on Guaranty Street, July 22nd, 13th Street, and August 19th in Langen Park.
Second.
They're properly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass this.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Seven ball.
This is not present.
Reggie Hill.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. To the Chair, those also reportedly seated, citizens and stakeholders of Mobile, greetings. My name is Reggie Hill. I'm here today to continue the conversation on how this body by agenda has proposed forcing civilians through order to behave in a specific, regular meeting conduct while you all continuously, week after week, conduct city business with irregular motives. In divine fashion, Thursday, I signed up to speak on rules, then, lo and behold, you all introduced a new rules ordinance on Friday. Mobile Municipal Court, this is not the last time that you all will hear about 38-030, where you all particularly bulldoze the poor, passing excessive fines on those receiving infractions citations or those incarcerated, and paving way to eliminate, excuse me, the issue with the iPad here, but I'm not surprised with how these devices work down here. Signature bonds, all while senselessly disregarding lawful obligations outlined clearly in Chapter 38 of the Mobile City Code. Yet, you plan to restrict citizen engagement. How is it that we enter contracts expending millions of dollars on vehicles, hazard boots, ammunition, parking lots, and more non-priority items of the like with no inventory of our direct expenditures, having offered no viable agreements towards resolving our city's public housing and public safety crisis? But again, we want to restrict citizen engagement. Why haven't we partnered with MCPSS to preserve last stadium in a collaborative effort through a 99-year lease per se that would afford a prosperous return for all interested parties beyond anything either of us would imagine or currently invest? That's proper budgeting, since we're looking for stuff. I mean, really, people, what is it so grand that you all would intentionally and strategically work to carve out citizen input regarding quality of life decisions Mobileians pay for, no matter your economic classification at that? Have the string pullers threaten the retention of your seat, thus enabling improper election reports, backdoor redistricting, and manipulatively coerce annexation? Have the string pullers convince you all that it's better to steal successful ideas from an alleged pedophile and spread a false narrative on the same individual so that the city can avoid being exposed in the court of law for targeted steam ray, COINTELPRO, and paperclip tactics being exercised on everyday citizens by our local executives? Or simply put, have y'all just been paid off? Nonetheless, this body shall not continue infringing upon our United States constitutional rights by way of letter suspension nor by way of out-of-touch policymaking. Because of ordinance 02-030 on the agenda, we look forward to absolute transparency in today's Rules Committee meeting, and we'll continue this conversation next week. Thank you for yielding the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Hill.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Madam Clerk.
Darceel Patel regarding Resolution thirty-seven seven six three.
Hello, everyone. I came to get the ABC license for twenty-one fifty.
Give us your full name, sir. Give us your full name.
Darceel Patel.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Came here to get the ABC license for twenty-one fifty, wholesale location, for company Alibaba twenty-two INC.
Okay. You have any questions for us, or do you just might want to make a statement?
No.
Okay. Yeah, the thirty-seven dash seven six three?
Yeah.
Okay, and that's the one that's on O'Shea Road?
Yes.
Mr. Penn, you have a question?
I don't have any questions right now. I don't have seen any issues right now. Thanks so much for coming out.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, thank you.
Wanda Cochran regarding zero-three seven four-two.
Good morning. Wanda Cochran, I live in the most exciting historic district in Mobile, the Low Da, Lower Dolphin Street Commercial Historic District. There's a lot that can be said about the resolution, but I think Ms. America said it best, good things take time. And I want to applaud you for taking the time to get this very important transition right. This morning, I heard a lot of legal talk, and really, all that is, is alerting you to possible risk. Whenever you take an action, there's risk. There's no way to ever be one hundred percent sure. Anybody that's got a lawyer and two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, or whatever the filing fee now is, can go off and file a lawsuit. So, what I'm going to suggest to you is not necessarily a legal solution, because there is no legal solution. In my view, what needs to happen is the focus needs to be on the policy, and that the council, which by law, under the Zagabi Act, is the policymaking body for this city, decides what policies do you think are needed? You make a decision on the policy, and then you direct your professionals to make it happen. And if all you are getting is, if you're hitting a brick wall, and they're saying, well, no, you can't do that, you have lots of tools in your toolbox. You can ask for an Attorney General's opinion, you can hire independent counsel if it's an area that you need some expertise in. And in the case of historic preservation, there are vast resources at your disposal from the National Trust for Historic Preservation, which is actually an arm of the National Park Service. The state of Alabama has an Alabama Historical Commission. Every Alabama commission is assigned an Attorney General lawyer. So, I'm urging you and congratulating you, because if what I heard this morning is correct, it is your intent to take a breath and try and get this right. I've written about some things that I personally saw. But I guess at the end of the day, what we're doing here is transitioning from a law that was in place for over sixty years, and you upended that for good reason, last, what, May ninth or whatever? So, it's no surprise that not every little thing was caught, and there's no problem. You have ways to do this, and these laws affect property rights. And so, it's really, really important that they be right so that they're evenly applied to everybody. That's it.
Any questions, Mr. Carroll?
No, just a statement. Mr. President, I asked the council attorney to send a request to you, all the council members in the administration, immediately following this morning's meeting, asking the administration for what procedures of transition and other policy things that they or had attempted or had in place, did this, knowing that the council's authority there was, is to set policy on new ordinances and to hopefully find out where we are with that, to make sure that our transition was right. So, I look forward to getting those answers. I know that they've requested, or you've requested executive session after this meeting, but some of these questions kind of need to be clearly answered and clarified so that we would have a proper understanding before even having an executive session. I'm also thankful that we're going to lay this over a week so that we can, if need be, add or amend the ordinance to make sure that it all fits. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Carroll. Madam Clerk.
Consent resolutions held over. Forty-six sixty-five declares a structure at fifteen sixty-seven Robert Ely Street of public nuisance and order it demolished.
So moved?
Second.
They're promptly moving second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass this.
Zero-three seven forty-two, appoint members to the ARB.
Motion to lay over one week.
They're promptly moving second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I'll just lay it over one week.
Fifty-eight seven forty-four, assess costs for removal of weeds, repeat weed lean group sixty-one.
Motion to lay over one week.
Second.
They're promptly moving second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
One, two, six, seven, okay. Five to one. Yeah, five to one. Madam Clerk.
CIP resolution, resolutions held over. Zero-eight seven fifty-three, approved purchase order to Game Time for playground equipment for Richardson Tricentennial Park.
So moved?
Second.
They're promptly moving second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass this.
Resolutions held over. Zero-one seven thirty-five, authorized addendum to Next Gen Asset Management Software License Agreement. Zero-eight seven thirty-six, approved purchase order to Sunbelt Fire for fire bunker gear and leather fire boots. Twenty-one seven thirty-seven, authorized contract of Marl Water Technologies for Cooling Tower Pump Replacement at Mobile Museum of Art. Twenty-one seven thirty-eight, authorized contract of Cone for Elevator and Escalator Service and Preventive Maintenance at various city facilities. Thirty-seven seven thirty-nine, authorized amendment between the City of Mobile and the State of Alabama Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for existing grant state expenditure plan number sixteen. Fifty-seven forty-one, amend tax increment financing District One. Twenty-one seven forty-nine, authorized contract with Timely Horn and Associates for Airport Boulevard Signal Improvement Project. Zero-eight seven fifty, approved purchase order to Asplun Tree Expert for Dolphin Street Tree Removals and Stump Grinding. Zero-eight seven fifty-one, approved purchase order to Clyde Armory Inc. for M-four carbine rifles for MPD. Zero-eight seven fifty-two, approved purchase order to TRP Construction Group for Road Striping Materials and Services for O'Shea Road. Thirty-seven seven fifty-four, authorized temporary site license between the city and New Cellular Wireless for the purpose of installing a cell facility at the Cruz Terminal. And zero-one seven sixty, repealing Resolution zero-one six seven zero twenty-twenty-three and adopting the amended intergovernmental agreement in place in the city clerk's office by the city attorney between the City of Mobile and Board of School Commissioners of Mobile County.
So moved?
Second.
They're promptly moving second and in discussion.
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Reynolds.
And this may be for the clerk and attorney. Zero-one seven sixty, do we need to make a motion to amend with this latest version that we produced to the clerk's office?
I don't believe so, Councilman Reynolds. The council has already discussed this at pre-council. As I understand it, the council has approved the changes discussed at that meeting, and so that version of the agreement has been attached to this resolution now, and that is the accompaniment, and I believe it replaces the earlier version by consent of the council.
Another discussion.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Dave.
So, what is zero-one seven ninety-four?
I'm sorry?
What is zero-one seven ninety-four? Okay, we're not going to do that. So, just so I can be absolutely sure, so on zero-one seven sixty, we're going to repeal Resolution zero-one six seven.
Yes.
And we are going to adopt the amended intergovernmental agreement, which as of, which is currently in the clerk's office, the one we discussed this morning with the most recent changes provided by Mr. Wood.
Right, that's the one that you all discussed this morning.
Right. And I've got a copy here in my hand of that, so I'll deliver that to the clerk.
Mr. President.
Mr. Carroll.
The general public does not understand the numbers as they listen to us on YouTube or wherever they are. Zero-one seven six zero is about Lad Stadium and the repeal of the first intergovernmental agreement, and then replacing it with the current intergovernmental agreement. In that agreement, there are some absolutes that the school board doesn't want to do. They don't want to build a hard cast stadium of more than twenty-five thousand seats, which they will build, but however, in the agreement, they are allowing for the design and temporary seating as needed to go up to thirty thousand seats inside the stadium when that is needed. Also, in the agreement, there is a statement that allows that once capacity reaches that on a continual basis, that permanent seating can be added with the assistance from the promoter and also the city of the city, so chooses to assist with permanent seating out there, which basically gets us to the thirty thousand seats that we need in the stadium with the design and with temporary seats coming in and out. In the long run, you know, I have, I am reluctant to support the issue, but however, I am more advantageous to continue to have a stadium that is also for municipal use. The good part of this is developing a relationship with the school system and the municipality. There's so many municipalities across the state of Alabama that have hard partnerships with the school systems. We're not one of them right now. This may be a good first step, but what it does allow is for us to continue the culture of the games that we have in place out there and also other activities that we have been promoting at the stadium. I'm happy to see that we have the ability to get thirty thousand seats when needed. I've talked to the school board commissioner president and heard their take on it. I've also talked to promoters and developers of the game and had their take on it. Last night, I spent time talking to constituents in District Two about this, and everyone seems to be somewhat in accord. Everybody knows that we can't get everything that we want, and everything, the school system is not getting everything that they want, but it does give us the opportunity to move forward with the stadium, to continue the games, and to continue the culture in which we've developed and built around Lad Stadium. Thank you, Mr. President.
Another discussion.
Yes, Mr. President.
Madam Vice President.
To follow what Councilman Carroll said, I think this entire council is happy to see a compromise come to us. We were waiting for some words, some definitive word from the school board, and we've received that. One of the main things that was still in discussion and of very much interest to the council was the amount of seating, and I think we have that handled. I look forward to being able to work with the promoters of these games, and like Mr. Carroll said, they have the ability to bring in more seats if they are needed, and I would hope that this council, if needed, again, would be able to step in to help. I look forward to seeing everyone come in for these games and also, which is very important, to keep Lad Stadium and the community, to make repairs and to leverage those resources so that it can remain viable, and of course, keeping the walking trail and some of the other things that the community is interested in is also important to us, and I'm happy to see us be able to work this out. Thank you.
Another discussion. I would like to join my colleagues. You know, many people ask the question, is this a good thing or is it a bad thing? But the school board is looking, from my understanding, to invest sixty million dollars, you know, over in that property, tried to make it one of the home fields of one of the local high schools. When I look at it, you know, and here are some of the plans that they are trying to make over there, you know, even bringing in, you know, other activity besides football, I would say that will always keep that community vibrant, you know, just not only in the football season, but throughout, you know, for the year. The residents would still be able to use the walking trails they do today, and with this being potentially being the biggest high school stadium in the state of Alabama, I really believe there are going to be many playoffs, you know, over there besides football. I believe maybe some baseball playoffs over there also, you know, when you hear, you know, about their future plans. And with that being said, you know, many residents, you know, have concerns, especially in the past, about, you know, missing parking money, you know, in their front yards. But if you have a lot of playoffs over there in their community, and, you know, the more playoffs that you have over there, the more parking space that is needed, the more that may help to generate, you know, a little revenue for the residents over there, you know, and also, you know, looking at besides, you know, keeping it vibrant, you know, over there, you know, pumping sixty million dollars over there, hopefully, they will bring Senior Bowl back downtown, because I believe that this will be the best stadium, especially if this can sit up to thirty thousand, you know, people, that it will be the best stadium in the City of Mobile. So, my hopes and my goals are really to see Senior Bowl come right back downtown to your original home. Anything else?
Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Penn.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'm going to join in with my colleagues. So, one of the things that we wanted to see is that capacity of the stadium to thirty thousand. We have that opportunity. One of the issues with Lad Stadium was the conditions of Lad Stadium for so many years. Now, we have an opportunity to see forty million to sixty million dollars invested in this property. That's a great win for the community. It's a great win for the City of Mobile. We're looking, and a great win for HBCU football to have opportunity to be in a first-class stadium, and that's very important. We saw the news that came out this past year when we had our HBCU Bowl, about some of the complaints that people had. Now, we have opportunity to change that and give HBCU football opportunity to have a first-class stadium in. And I agree with my colleague, I believe that it would be great to have the Senior Bowl back in down, back in the community, and now they're close to the hotels downtown and have an opportunity to just receive a lot of that economic growth for that community. And so, I talked about earlier about great partnerships, and this is a great opportunity to partner with the school system, and I look forward to finding other partnerships throughout other facilities that we have here in the City of Mobile, because I think it's very important to have those type of partnerships. Thank you, Mr. President.
Another discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass this.
Ordinance is being introduced, zero-two zero thirty-two.
Per council rules, this ordinance will lay over for one week.
Consent resolutions being introduced, zero-nine seven sixty-one through zero-three seven ninety-three.
Move to waive the rules for immediate consideration of these resolutions as read with the exception of thirty-seven dash seven sixty-four and zero-three dash seven ninety-three.
Second.
They're promptly moving second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Rules waived.
Zero-nine seven sixty-one, transfer funds from District Three discretionary account to Parks and Recreation General Fund. Thirty-one seven sixty-two, authorize a grant application to the Department of Justice, Bureau of Justice Assistance for the fiscal year twenty-three, Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, a local match. Thirty-seven seven sixty-three, recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a retail beer table wine offer Mrs. Only license to BP Gas Station on O'Shea Road. Sixty-seven sixty-five and seven sixty-six, approve and award a special bonus to the Officer of the Month and Public Works at Large Employee of the Month. Sixty-seven sixty-seven, determine an appropriation to Stryker's Club, Inc., serves a public purpose and approved payment. Thirty-seven seven ninety-two, appoint Sam Hecker to the Mobile City County Youth Council.
So moved?
Second. Second.
Improper to move as second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
CIP Resolutions being introduced, 21-768 through 21-770.
For council rules, these will lay over for one week.
Resolutions being introduced, 08-771 through 67-88.
By council rules, these will also be laid over for one week.
Call for public hearings, 41-789 call for public hearing to rezone property located at 258 North Hamilton Street to, and 263 North Franklin Street from T4 and T5.1 to T4 scheduled August 15th, 41-790 call for public hearing to assent to the vacation of a portion of US Highway 90 West Service Road, scheduled August 15th, 41-791 call for public hearing to consider a vacation of right-of-way fee as a condition of the vacation of a portion of US Highway 90 West Service Road, scheduled August 15th.
So moved?
Second.
Improper to move as second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearings called.
Announcements, the regular city council meeting, um, for next week will be held on Monday, July the 24th.
Announcements, uh, District 4, Councilman Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. President. Had the opportunity to, uh, attend a meeting with the governor, many state representatives, uh, state senators, county commission, the mayor, many others to, um, hear the awards for the Go Mesa funding. Go Mesa funding is funding as a result of royalties from oil out in the, um, Gulf and I'm happy to report that the city of Mobile was in District 4, specifically was awarded $2.5 million to improve access to the waterways, uh, in District 4 over on Halls Mill Creek. And I look forward to working with the administration and all the other stakeholders on developing the plan going forward. Also, Mr. President, the Rules Committee will meet, um, after, I guess probably around 1:30, I suspect, in the council conference room.
No, one o'clock.
One o'clock, okay. One o'clock at the council conference room. Thank you, Mr. President.
Uh, thank you, Councilman Reynolds. Uh, District 2, Councilman Carroll?
No announcements, Mr. President.
Thank you. Uh, District 1, Councilman Penn?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, we have a lot of great events taking place in District 1 hosted by a lot of great organizations and churches throughout our community. Um, on July the 22nd, we have sixth annual community outreach, um, back to school blast. It will be, um, DJ Roski will be there, DJ Dirty Dan, um, Pastor David Elwitz, uh, will be hosting this event, will be from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM on 2523 St. Stevens Road. So we're inviting everyone to come out, um, in the community. Also, we will have a community engagement at Mill Street Park regarding the new playground, um, equipment and playground update. It will be Thursday, July the 27th from 4:30 to 6:00 PM at the Mill Street Park. And then you will also have a, um, great third annual back-to-school bash at Sage Park, July the 30th, um, Sunday. Um, it's from 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM. Will be a great opportunity to play basketball, um, and have free food, free supplies by a great organization here in the city, the B X R Foundation. And then they also will have, um, we have another great, um, with multiple organizations. I'm at Figures Park Back-to-School Supply Giveaway, um, will be August the 5th by a lot of organizations in the Toma Ville community. Um, if you want more information, um, you can give a call at 251-229-0806 at Figures Park, August the 5th from 1:00 PM. Uh, and so come out and let's have a great time. Thank you, Mr. President.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Penn. District 5, Councilman Dave.
Uh, District 7, Vice President Gregory.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this coming Thursday, uh, I will be at Hillsdale with, uh, Dirty Dan and his crew. Uh, we do this every year and I look forward to having his team there with all of the youngsters who are already at Hillsdale Recreation Center for summer day camp. So it should be a really wonderful event. Thank you to everyone who is involved, all the volunteers and, uh, sponsors as, as well as the vendors who will be there. And then, um, following that on Friday, as I mentioned earlier, the youth violence prevention program will be at Hillsdale as well and I look forward to participating in that with Joshua Jones and all of his team. Thank you, Mr. President.
Uh, thank you, Vice President Gregory and to the citizens of District 3, greetings. On this, uh, coming Thursday, uh, July the 20th, uh, as Vice President Gregory had mentioned, it's Alabama Hip-Hop Week with, uh, DJ Dirty Dan. Uh, this is the 16th annual and they will be at Taylor Park this coming Thursday from 12:00 noon until 4:00 PM. Inviting, uh, many of the young people to come out to 1050 Baltimore Street for this great event. Again, this will take place this coming Thursday, July the 20th, um, from 12:00 noon to 4:00 PM at Taylor Park. And also this coming Sunday, July the 23rd, is District 3 Annual Back-to-School Rally, uh, which will be held at the Pleasant Valley Shopping Center, which is located on the corner of Government Boulevard, Highway 90 and Pleasant Valley Road. Inviting all the kids, especially elementary school kids, to come out this coming Sunday from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. Uh, we will have plenty of food, fun, and of course, school supplies. And again, I'm very excited about this. Uh, we have several, uh, people that came in to, uh, volunteer and also to, uh, help sponsor this event. Again, this will take place this coming Sunday from 4:00 to 6:00 PM at the Pleasant Valley Shopping Center from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. Again, looking to have a great time. Uh, Mr. Gregory.
I said that I will be at Hillsdale with, uh, Dirty Dan and the opportunity for entertainers. It will be Wednesday. You'll be there Thursday.
Yeah, I was kind of wondering, he gonna be in two places at once.
The night is this Wednesday, yes, sorry about that.
Okay. Anything from the administration?
Yeah, I'd like to, on behalf of the mayor and the administrative staff, just thank city council for their hard and diligent work on getting this intergovernmental agreement in place between us and the school system. With that said, I'm going to turn it over to Ricardo Wood.
Uh, Mr. President, uh, this time I'm going to go ahead and ask that we go into executive session. I'll make the declaration. My name is Ricardo Woods. I am the city attorney and I'm a licensed attorney in the state of Alabama, asking the council to go into executive session for a matter that may likely be imminent in litigation or any litigation based on the things we need to discuss.
Madam Clerk?
Need a motion?
Oh.
So moved? Go into executive session and do not reconvene.
Correct. Except for to go back to your, uh, meeting, but we won't reconvene this meeting.
Could I get a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
President Small?
Yes.
Vice President Gregory?
Yes.
Councilmember Penn?
Yes.
Councilmember Carroll?
Yes.
Councilmember Reynolds?
Yes.
Councilmember Dave?
Yes.
We won't adjourn. Readjourn. Thank you.